Joe, you want to come on up? Whichever side you want to be on.
It's your better side.
All right. Good day, everybody. Here we are at our Des Moines City Council meeting, but this time of the year, this is actually our last meeting in the year. So, thank you all for being here. One of the important things that we do every year is we have a proclamation noticing National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And that's going to come up on the longest day of the year, the 21st of December. So, it's a little early, but Joe Stevens, ever since that, and this is what, our 15th year? Yeah, and so, they have been working really hard for the last 15 years, helping homeless people. And before I do it, Joe, you want to make any comment?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, guys. You know, every year, people die homeless, and this is an event where we remember those that have died homeless in Iowa. We honor them as human beings, and we remember something about their lives, and then we commit ourselves to preventing these kinds of deaths in the future through working together to end homelessness. And so, last month, between outreach and our Homeless Resource Center on Euclid, JAPA served over 500 unique homeless families and individuals, again, just last month in November. The really scary thing is 351 of them were unsheltered, meaning living outdoors. That's three times the number when we started 15 years ago, two times the number of, approximately two times the number of when COVID started. So, the problem continues to grow, and we, once again, will be recommitting ourselves to end this problem by helping to end homelessness. And so, thank you, Mayor, for your commitment and helping us all these years. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our proclamation reads as follows: "The winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income adults and children in Des Moines. The spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding our commitments to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless, the National Consumer Advisory Board, and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. And whereas JAPA organizes the National Homeless Memorial each year to remember those who have died homeless, to honor them as human beings and fellow residents, and to prevent future homeless deaths by recommitting ourselves to raise awareness about solutions and engage volunteers to help people survive, find housing, and rebuild their lives. And whereas during the season of generosity and sharing, residents of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves promoting compassion and concern for all, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, in remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as is the city's collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council, and all of our residents of Des Moines, do proclaim December 21st, 2022 is National Homeless Persons Memorial Day, and ask everyone to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage everyone to support all efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. And thanks to JAPA and to all who have committed to taking part in this endeavor." Joe? Thank you. Keep up the good work. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to invite you guys all out to the Iowa Homeless Memorial. I forgot to tell you when it is and where it is. It's at the Iowa State Capitol again this year. It's always at 5:30 PM on December 21st, which is the longest night of the year and the first day of winter. Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to seeing you there that night, too.
All right, we have another proclamation, and this is the American Hellenic Education Progressive Association Day. And Nick, I'm going to ask you to come up and bring your team with you, and if you'd introduce everybody, and let's talk about it, and then I'll read our proclamation.
You're up.
All right. I'll wait till everyone gets up here. All right, thank you. This is some of our core members of our local HEPA Chapter 192, the James L. Carthen, Chapter 192, that's based out of Ankeny. Again, thank you for the public proclamation congratulating HEPA on 100 years of service to our community and our ongoing philanthropic and philosophical endeavors. We're truly grateful for this recognition, and we are proud to have been a part of, to make a positive impact in Des Moines for over 100 years. Our organization, HEPA, was founded in 1922 with the mission of promoting Hellenism, education, philanthropy, civic responsibility, and family and individual excellence. Over the past century, we've been committed to upholding these values and working to a better, working to better our community through a range of charitable and educational initiatives. Through our efforts, we've been able to provide scholarships to deserving students, support local schools, educational programs, offer assistance to those in need through a variety of community service programs that we have in the city, including affordable senior housing that we have for apartment complexes here in the greater Des Moines area, with another one being built in the process, as well as our Service Dog for Warriors program, helping those that come back from war and battle to get back into their normal lives. Again, we'd like to thank this, take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor, as well as the members of the HEPA family and their support and dedication to our organization and our mission. And without their hard work and commitment, we would not be able to achieve all that we have. So, on behalf of HEPA, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the mayor and all that have supported us through 100-year history. And of course, we look forward to, you know, another 100 years of support in the community.
All right, let's quickly, we'll read our proclamation real quick. The American Hellenic Education Progressive Association HEPA was founded on July 26, 1922 in Atlanta, Georgia, by eight visionary Greek immigrants to help unify, organize, and protect individuals of all ethnic, racial, and religious backgrounds against bigotry, discrimination, and defamation. And whereas the mission is to promote the Hellenic ideas of ancient Greece, which include philanthropy, education, civic responsibility, and family and individual excellence through community service and volunteerism. And whereas, members from Des Moines have served in the armed forces of the United States to protect the freedom of the people of the United States and to preserve those democratic ideals that are part of the Hellenic legacy. And during World War II, Des Moines members worked behind enemy lines in Nazi-occupied Greece to help liberate Greece and raised more than $1 million for the United States War Bonds. And whereas the National Housing Program was sponsored safe and dignified affordable housing for vulnerable senior citizens under the Section 202 Supportive Housing for the Elderly Program, with three of its apartment buildings in the greater Des Moines area with over 150 residents. And whereas, Des Moines has been presidents, vice presidents, governors, and mayors in the United States, including for Iowa, former Governor Leo Hoig and former Des Moines Mayor Dwight Lewis. Now therefore, I are the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our residents, to hereby proclaim December 12, 2022, is American Hellenic Education Progressive Association Day, and I encourage everyone to recognize the 100th anniversary of the founding of the American Hellenic Education Progressive Association. And thank you for your work. And I remember one of our members, Tom Velasquez, used to honor all the work that you folks did. So, he was quite a guy. Congratulations.
Much appreciated.
And we'll get started with our meeting. All right, we've got a special presentation. I'd like to have the whole council come up, if you would. We're going to have a surprise special presentation to us, so come on up.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor County. Thank you, Des Moines City Council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Sophia Amad, and I serve as Vice President of Philanthropy at Wesley Life. And I am here today to thank the Des Moines City Council and Mayor County for their support of our Wesley Life Meals on Wheels campaign. Through their generosity and community leadership, they designated a $600,000 ARPA allocation to help with our capital campaign project that's taking place in the Drake neighborhood. We appreciated the opportunity to share about this project and about the many, many clients in Des Moines that this project will impact. We wanted to present to you this beautiful print by local artist Jimmy Navarro. I'm going to pass it through the line for you to take a look at. So, pardon me. So, Jimmy is a Des Moines artist. He is a BIPOC artist that we engaged to create this piece. It's a depiction of the garden harvest that we'll produce from the hydroponic garden at the Meals on Wheels facility. He, too, is an urban farmer and a farmer, and spends his free time tending the soil and working with vegetables to be able to feed and produce wonderful produce for others. We felt like this was a fitting gift to showcase the fruitful generosity of the city of Des Moines and the thousands upon thousands of individuals that this new campus will feed. So, again, we thank you so, so much. Councilman Mantlebaum, thank you. We know this is in your district and area, and we're really excited for this, and to the entire council for the opportunity to present this. And we hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening. Thank you. Wonder could we get it?
We'll move this out of the way. All right, I think we've got to start right in. Quickly, let's call our meeting for December 12 to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
We've got to move in a second. The amendments on the consent agenda, Items 3 through 51, 4E, FN are withdrawn. The inspections are incomplete. 5R is withdrawn. The inspection is incomplete on that one also. 19 Iowa was added. It's a recommendation from Council Member Voss to appoint Teresa Perameter to the Greater Des Moines Sister Cities Commission, Seat 7, expiring April 27 to 23. And the Council Member Mantlebaum and I, as Mayor Protem and the mayor, supported this adding on the late date. 38 was withdrawn by the city manager for further study on the regular agenda, which are Items 52 to 73. 56B was added. It's a final consideration. The ordinance above, the waiver is requested by Mike Ludwig, our Deputy Director of Development Services, and this one will require six votes. We, unless anybody has anything else, we have a motion in a second, and a voice vote on this will be good. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda. Those are Items 3 through 51, and I don't see any that were
Move approval.
Repolled. It has been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote, please.
Both in votes, yes.
Thanks, Connie.
Seven, yes.
All right. And that takes us now to 52, I think. All right. Item 52 is our first item on our hearings. Before our hearings, I just want to remind everybody that this evening, we have two vacation hearings, one conveyance hearing, one lease purchase hearing, one annexation moratorium hearing, two zoning hearings, and 10 public improvement hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, those are 55 and 56. We will hear from the parties in interest, which essentially are the applicant, anybody within that 250 feet that received a notice from the city. All of the parties in interest, after they have commented, we'll ask if anybody has any public comment, and we'll open it up to anyone who has germane comments to make on that. And to aid in recognizing the parties in interest who may speak, I will ask that anyone else, please don't step up if you're not one of those parties until we open it up for the public hearing. Otherwise, we'll have to consider you disruptive and not allow you to speak for the remainder of the evening. So, any rate, for the general public, for the zoning items, again, you will not be called on. If not, for the annexation moratorium hearing this evening, any interested person may make comments, not to exceed a minute per person. For other hearings this evening, any interested person may make germane comments, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing on those, unless it's ended sooner, either for the failure to make germane comments, or people don't have an interest in making comments or updates on that. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments regarding the plan, specifications, form of documents, and engineer's estimate, and the low bidder designation are germane on those items. So, with that, let's begin. Item 52 is on the vacation of a portion of East Wallinett Street and East Fourth Street right-of-way adjoining 321 East Wallinett Street in convenience of a sidewalk cafe to the Northwestern Hospitality LLC for $643 per year. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. We'll ask is any comments from the general public on this item?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 52, 52A, and pursuant to Rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 53, on the vacation of Dixon Court right-of-way adjoining 1626 Dixon Street in the conveyance to Liberty Holdings, Inc. for $8,440. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And again, we'll open it up for general public comments, one minute per person. Anybody have any comments on this one regarding a vacation on Dixon Street? Seeing none?
I will move
All right.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Connie?
Yes.
All right, Item 54 is on the conveyance of a portion of vacated Southeast Fourth Street right-of-way adjoining 403 Scott and 605 to 619 Southeast Fourth Street to Artistic Iron Properties, LLC for $32,100. And again, we'll ask for germane comments from the general public. Anybody want to make comment on this item on a conveyance?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 54.
Second.
54 has been moved and seconded. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 55 is on a request from the city of Des Moines and the Board of Waterworks Trustees. Ted Corrigan is the officer for property located in the vicinity at 2508 George Flag Parkway to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial and to rezone the property from EX mixed-use district to limited I-1 industrial district to allow outdoor storage that would be necessary to an office and garage buildings continued from November 21 of 2022 council meeting. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the Des Moines Waterworks and requires six votes. And first, we'll ask if there are any parties in interest, either the applicant for the zoning, or anyone living within 250 feet to be rezoned, and we'll ask, are any of those people here? Seeing none. Second, is there anyone here to make germane comments from the general public regarding this item in request from the Des Moines Waterworks? Seeing none?
I'll move Item 55, 55A, and 55B.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 56 is on a request from Alejandro J. Munoz de La Cruz, who's the owner for property located at 111726 Street, to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to N5-2 Neighborhood District to allow the reuse of the existing structure for a duplex use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Michael Ludwig, our Deputy Director of Development Services. It requires six votes. And again, I'm going to ask first, are there any parties in interest present here that would like to speak on this item? Again, those are either the applicant or anyone within that 250 feet who received notice. Seeing none. Are there any general public people who would like to make a germane comment regarding this application?
Seeing none. I would like to say that I'm happy that this project is moving forward. We're eliminating the vacancy in the neighborhood and getting a duplex in that spot, and so I'm happy to see that. And I'll move 56, 56A and 56B.
All right, been moved and seconded.
Vote, yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. Thank you, Connie. Item 57, on the proposition to authorize a lease purchase agreement in the principal amount of not to exceed $100,000 for the purpose of acquiring certain items of equipment consisting of three electric vehicles for the use by the Des Moines Public Library. Council Communication Number 22-555. We'll again open it up for germane comments from the general public and ask if anyone would like to speak.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 57.
57 has been moved and seconded.
Bozen, yes.
Seven, yes.
Yes.
Item 58 is on an amended and renewed annexation moratorium agreement and 28E agreement with the city of Pleasant Hill. Again, we'll ask if any interested person would like to make comments, not to exceed one minute per person.
See none, Your Honor. I'll move 58.
58's been moved and seconded. Ask everyone to vote. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Takes us to Item 59. Item 59 is on the 2023 Traffic Signal Replacement Contract 2 Resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate, and to receive and file bids, and designated the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc. Wayne Leslie is president. $576,135.68, Council Communication Number 22-570. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's again open it up to the general public, and only the comments regarding the plans, the specifications, the form of documents, the engineer's estimate, and the low bidder will be considered germane comments. So, we'll ask if anybody would like to speak on those plans, specifications, or
Good evening, Garland Armstrong, Ward 2. My wife is, my wife at home concerned about the traffic signal, especially how they're going to do it, because especially when we see how the, how the arrows, they sometimes like flashing, and she has low vision, she can't see normally. But if you make it like a red, red part, it will be okay. But for this one, I just, she would like to know how's it going to be working out. So, like, especially for the traffic part, especially if they, the yellow keeps on flashing on again and again and again, and it's not completely red, how, how they're going to make sure this one will not be able to affect, especially people who have low vision problems and can't see normally, especially with their eyes and when they're driving, because that's the biggest concern, especially it keeps on and on. And what they're going to do about this to make sure that the, when they, with the arrows and for the traffic signal, to make sure about it. So, just want to, just want to have that comment on that.
Are you talking about left, left turn signals, the left turn arrow?
Yeah, like they do that, when they do the left turns and, and then also too. And also, if they doing the right turns too, also, they should have one for the right turn, especially if they're going to, so what they're going to do on this one too about it, to make sure.
All right, on the, the turn signals and to protect, I think, our pedestrians, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, if it's okay, I'll have traffic engineer reach out to you, so we make sure we're getting the right questions answered for you. Is that's all right? Because we've got your contact information.
Mm-hmm. All right. Anyone else want to make comment on this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 59, 59A.
Second.
59, 59.
Seven, yes.
Takes to Item 60, which is on the Des Moines Levy Alterations Phase C. It's a resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designated the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Peterson Contractors, Inc. Cordell Peterson is the president. $17,388,129.50. This is Council Communication Number 22-572. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. B is approving the supplemental agreement number six to the professional services agreement with Bar Engineering Company for the Des Moines Levy Alterations Phase C, not to exceed $1,745,500. Again, on that one, Council Communication Number 22-563. Mr. Manager, I'm going to open it up here for Mr. Manager, I'm going to open it up here for some quick public comments, but this is something we've been working on for a long time, and I am really glad to see that we're doing this to protect our citizens, businesses, and public improvements.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, it's absolutely exciting to get Phase C, obviously the third phase of these improvements. But even prior to the levy improvements that are A, B, and C now, there's been about 10 years and even a little more than that now, prior to that at Birdland and other locations north of here. So there's been quite a bit of effort to this. We do still have, what is it, D, E, F, and G left. So we're about halfway through the levy improvements as we work to the south. This will cover the convergence of the Des Moines River and the Raccoon, and then the next phases will be further on down.
And I want to thank our city engineers and Pam especially, who has spent a lot of time with us, talking to all of our best friends at the Corps of Engineers, that quite frankly, even before any of us were up here, back into the 80s, we were working with the Corps of Engineers to try to resolve these issues. And we've been raising the money, but the reality here is often with levy work, you can't do anything until you get the approval by the Corps of Engineers. And we finally have gotten sort of a thumbs up and we're progressing. So, Mr. Manager and staff, and to the citizens, we're moving this thing forward to protect you. So let's quickly open it up and see is there anybody from the general public would like to make comment regarding the plans, the specifications, the form of documents, the engineer's estimate, the lowest bidder designation on this project? Seeing none?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'm seeing A, B.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on on Phase B of this, it's just getting completed, I'd like to give some applause to Craig Buska, who has been managing this project from Steve Neighbors' staff, and they just reopened the Meredith Trails on both sides of the river in the last week or 10 days. So there's a lot of interest in the levy work and the trail work that joins that. So Craig did a great job on this project. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
We already voted. It's Connie. We just didn't get Connie's.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Seven, yes. Item 61 is on Drake Observatory Foundation Repair Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, and receive and file bids and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is Gruce Construction LLC. Derek J. Gruce is the owner. $360,940. Council Communication number 22-564. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Now, Mr. Manager, I think that they just celebrated, didn't they, their 100th anniversary out there? And this is sort of a joint work all through the years between Drake University and the City of Des Moines. So anybody that's had a chance to go out and look at what's going on out at the observatory, I hope that you approve, but if you haven't, go out and take a look. It really is interesting and you can learn a lot about what's going on up in this sky and the universe. Anyone in the general public like to make comment on the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the lowest bidder?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 61.
Second.
Item 62.
Seven, yes.
Is on the Evelyn K. Davis Park Basketball Court Improvements Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is Gruce Construction LLC. Derek J. Gruce is the owner for $573,487. Council Communication number 22-571. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, for those that have or haven't had a chance to get up to the Evelyn K. Davis Park, it's wonderful all year round, but I'll tell you, the basketball courts get a lot of use and there's a lot of fun going on during the summer months up there and some specified nights where the city goes up and helps hand out food and hot dogs and some other things. And it's been a lot of fun through the years. So we'll, let's open it up and see if the general public again would like to make comments on the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder. Anyone?
Seeing none. I will say that I'm happy to see this moving forward, and I'll move 62, 62A.
Second.
And 62A have been moved and seconded. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
63, on the Hamilton Drain Stormwater Improvement Phase Three Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is RW Excavating Solutions LLC. Dan E. Wilson is the managing member. Council Communication number 22-574. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. And I know that, again, here's another example of some really hard work by our city staff working through these stormwater improvement projects. And this is a huge one, and I know that Indira knows that up in her ward. This, these kinds of things really, we all learned in 2018 when we got that 10 inches of water up in that area in about four hours. It doesn't matter whether you're high or low, certain areas flood, and we need to work on stormwater detention and evacuation and get it to happen. And this, this work is continuing. And Mr. Manager, thank you and staff for moving it ahead. Again, we'll open it up, see if the general public would like to make any comments regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation. Anybody out there want to make any comments?
Seeing none. I will move items 63 and 63A, and I want to just echo what the mayor said. I know engineering, everybody at this city has been so involved with this project, and it is an absolutely huge project. And we still have, we still have phases to follow after this is done. But I'm delighted. It's really helping an entire neighborhood. So with that, move 63 and 63A.
Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 64, on the Harriet Street Solar Field Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is Van Mannen Electric, Inc. Nathan S. Van Mannen is the president. Council Communication number 22-575. A is approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. We'll open up the general public if they would like to make comments regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder. But Mr. Manager, would you like to make any quick comment on this one? I know you and your staff have been working hard to show that we are going to be on that energy independence path.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So yeah, another great project. What we've got is an opportunity to put solar fields actually out onto the ground to cover a little more space as opposed to traditionally up on top of buildings. There will be two fields set up. One will be to supply enough energy for the new greenhouse being constructed, and then the second will be for the Animal Control and Services Building, and it's also under construction. So really great opportunity to stretch into the solar panel aspect.
All right. Ask if there's any speakers?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I can move items.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 65, on Intelligent Transportation System Phase Three Resolution, Improving Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file the bids, and designating the lowest responsible responsive bidder as Iowa Signal, Inc. Wayne Leslie is president. Council Communication number 22-576. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll open it up and see if anybody from the general public like to make comment regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, the engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation.
Seeing none. I had a quick question. I was wondering how invasive something like this would be and what the notification system would be like when construction is happening.
I'm sorry, the question was...
How invasive these changes, like...
Invasive?
Yeah, like is this going to be in the roadway or anything like that?
Oh, so no, this is, this is all about the controllers and the opportunity to make those smart controllers that can be changed from the office. Whereas today, if there's a malfunction or an issue, you have to be on site to program any changes and make any fixes on site.
Regarding traffic signals.
Traffic, thank you. Traffic signals.
So implementing this would just be pretty simple and non-invasive and wouldn't really disturb traffic or anything like that?
Only at the momentary swap out of the equipment that's on site.
Okay. With that, I'll move 65 and 65A.
Second.
Vote, yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 66, on McKinley Avenue Reconstruction from South Union Street to Southwest 9th Street. Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file the bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as All-Star Concrete LLC. Alex Vasquez is a member and manager. Council Communication number 22-577. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll ask the general public if they would like to make any comments regarding the plan specifications, form of the documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Steve Neighbor and his crew. I know Councilmember Voss and I took a lot of their time, and we met with a lot of the neighbors. They took some time of staking it off so everyone would know where the trail portion in the sidewalk, how much land they were going to be giving up out of their front yard. So it was very helpful, so there was no surprises. I haven't heard of All-Star Concrete. This is a large project. I'm happy to see it go, but this will be very time-consuming. It will take up a lot of, it's going to be very invasive to these neighbors and with garbage removal and things like that. So I hope that they're prepared to, to help with the neighbors and getting their garbage cans down to where they need to, putting in their temporary driveways and things like that, because I haven't ever heard of them. So with that being said, unless there's other comments, I'll move 66 and 66A.
Second on that. And staking out this made, just turned it around for all the emails and comments that Joe and I took, so.
Yeah.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much to Steve and his staff on this one, so.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ask everyone to vote.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 67, on Southeast 6th Street Reconstruction from East Hillside Avenue to East Edison Avenue. Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, the engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is Brothers Cleaning Corporation. Jessito Valero is the president. Council Communication number 22-573. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll ask the general public to make any comments regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, and the lowest bidder designation to step up at this time. Seeing none?
See none, Your Honor. I'll move 67 and 67A. Happy to see this getting done. Also, this is another contractor I haven't seen bid on anything. I'm glad that we're getting some other people bidding, but just want to make sure that they're able to do this and do it right. So hopefully Steve and his crew will keep an eye on that. So I'll move 67 and 67A.
Vote, yes.
Seven, yes.
68, on the University Avenue, 39th Street to 25th Street Improvements Resolution, Improving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder is All-Star Concrete LLC. Alex Vasquez is the member and manager. Council Communication number 22-553. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, we'll open up the general public and ask if they have any comments regarding the plan specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or the low bidder designation.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move items.
68 and 68A.
And I will second.
Just the same comments. These are two big projects, McKinley and University, that a new contractor is doing. So I'm hoping they have the wherewithal, the manpower to be able to handle both of these things.
Happy to see.
They're very impactful for both of these areas.
I'm happy to see that we're getting new contractors as well. That's been...
Yeah, I agree.
A goal for sure, and I'm excited to see this project moving forward, and we'll see how it goes, and hopefully we won't have any complaints.
We'll all hear about it if we do.
Vote, yes.
Joe? All right. That ends the hearings. Takes us to item 69. Item 69 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Code Changes to Match Field Conditions on the East and West Sides of 7th Street Between Grand Avenue and High Street. Council Communication number 22-552. Council, any comments, ideas, motions?
No comments. I'll move item 69 in pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second and third reading.
Second.
All right. 69 has been moved and seconded.
Vote, yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 70, is amending Chapter 74 of the Municipal Code, Regulating Parks and Recreation Facilities Fees and Mobile Food Vendors in Designated Parks. Council Communication number 22-554. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Benjamin Page, Parks and Recreation Director, requires six votes, and B is approval of the updated City of Des Moines Parks and Recreation Rules. Council Communication number 22-556. Council, any thoughts?
I'll move 70A and B.
Second.
You want to wave?
And I'll waive the pursuant to...
Okay, final consideration. Thank you. Never mind. My fault.
Vote, yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 71, amending Chapter 60 of the Municipal Code Relating to the Housing Code. Council Communication number 22-566.
I had an issue or question on this. Uh, we talked about this during our work session, uh, and I was hopeful that we could add, as we consider this, um, language to address lead service lines, uh, in rental properties. I know that's a broader issue and that we need to comprehensively address that issue. Des Moines Water Works, I believe, has identified the properties that either are or are likely to have lead service lines. And what I would like to see us do, since we know that there is a potential lead hazard at those properties, as part of the rental license process, just requiring an annual test of the drinking water if you are on the Water Works list as a likely lead service line property. And if that property then, uh, or if that test then shows up that there is lead into the drinking water, that is obviously a hazard that would need to be remedied. But I would like us to address, uh, address that. That's an action that we can take now while we work towards a more comprehensive approach to lead service lines. Uh, but I, I would be interested in council taking that action and incorporating that when we get to the second and third reading of this, uh, this ordinance.
Yeah, that, if I could.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, we would definitely need to allow for time for legal to assist with writing up those changes, uh, within the ordinance. Um, so be curious what your thoughts are on that, or council.
I would support that.
And if you'd want, we could do a work, workshop as well before that point.
Well, Josh, what you, you're proposing is only the rental properties and only rental properties that are on the, um, Des Moines Water Works list, right?
So, right. So we match up the list and then as properties come up, when there is a rental certificate or license.
Okay.
As part of the license, the rental license.
Okay.
That, that be an additional step, that they, they just take the step of testing the drinking water. And Des Moines Water Works will provide free testing, is my understanding. So by making this a requirement, we just are ensuring that as a step in the rental certificate process, they reach out to Des Moines Water Works to test the water.
So do you think we should talk this around the table a little bit more at a council work session or?
Uh, do you think we would really need a work session for it or would it be just getting legal to draft the language and then we can vote on it?
Well, and should that be a separate amendment to the amendment?
Well, no, I'm, it would be drafted up and then it would be a new item, wouldn't it?
So we'd go ahead and pass this one and then bring this as a new item?
Josh, is that what you're asking for? Are you asking for an amendment?
I mean, I'd, I'd like to do this as part of this process. Otherwise, I'm concerned it doesn't get done.
I'm not supportive of it. I want to wait and I think we should include Water Works in this discussion. I think it is not part of the, uh, not part of the code right now. I don't want to just willy-nilly add something, uh, until we've had a chance to evaluate it, till we've had an opportunity to meet with Des Moines Water Works. I don't know how many, uh, homes that would affect, but that, uh, is not something that I would be supportive of adding at this time.
There are roughly twenty thousand properties that have been identified as potentially having a lead service line in the city of Des Moines.
And again, free testing?
Uh-huh. And there is free testing. Uh, Water Works has identified those properties.
I, I would want to hear from Des Moines Water Works. Uh, I think it's not right that we can sit here and say, well, it's free testing. We don't know how this impacts Des Moines Water Works. So I'm not going to be supportive of it. I think it would affect rentals in the city of Des Moines. It would, uh, reduce, possibly reduce the number of affordable rental units in our city. I just think that we have a lot more work to do before we would pass something like this. I see Sue Ann's in the, in the, uh, chamber. Maybe Sue Ann would, would address this. I mean, she's the expert.
Before, can I, can I just add? Who, who would be, so is Water Works responsible from changing the water line if it tests, uh, with lead in it? Or the owner is responsible, I guess? I, I don't know. Is it the owner?
The homeowner is responsible for their service lines.
Right. And so they'll, I mean, they'll.
Or in this case, the property owner.
Right.
The property owner.
The property owner. So then he'll pass on the cost to the renter and we'll, we'll see rents go up if that, which, I mean, I, I understand, I understand the issue of, I mean, no one should be drinking. Hopefully they're smart enough to be testing it and seeing if they, they are and fixing that.
Well, it doesn't have to be hopefully if we have it as part of the.
Well, why don't we, why don't we pass this the way it is, Josh, and then come back with some of the other issues that had came up about, uh, the program for the, the heating that we're going to discuss at the, at the next workshop. And then we can, we can come up with kind of where all these things are and how affordable housing is going to be affected with that. And then we can have that discussion and we can pass this the way it is. We can waive the second and third reading. This can be done and then we can, and then we can concentrate on, on doing that. I mean, I, I understand what the issue is and I, I, I mean, there's a potential of, of being supportive of that, but I, we do have to be very careful about how we are going to affect the affordable housing, although this is a safety issue and I, and I, and I agree with you that we need to be able to be cautious, but Water Works needs to be at the table. I mean.
If I, if I may, when we had the discussion about separating the forced air heating units, um, we, the discussion was completely around safety and that it needed to be done and, and how it affected affordable housing wasn't really a biggest concern because it was so important for safety. This is sort of the same issue, saying that we need to know if there's lead in the water, if people are living in these units, affordable or not, and if they're going to be drinking water. It's going to be passed on to the, to the renter anyway if it turns into medical bills. And so this is something that's very important for us to be moving forward with.
And I agree. I mean, I think there are ways to, to mediate, for example, because I wasn't proposing, although there could be a pathway where you propose, because we are going to need to figure out how to get these twenty thousand service lines replaced. That is an issue that communities around the country are facing because we shouldn't have lead service lines for, for drinking water. But what I suggested in the context of rental, in the place where we know that there are likely lead service lines, rather than require it be replaced immediately, we test to make sure that there isn't a safety hazard. Because if there is an immediate safety hazard, that should be remedied and that should be the landlord's responsibility, um, because you're not providing a safe inhabitable place. I would move, I'm not comfortable waiving the second and third readings because I did raise this issue during the work session and tried to have the conversation and get it addressed there. So I'd like to have this come back either in parallel. So this will be at, at our next, uh, you know, we, we've got till January is our next meeting, so hopefully we'll make progress on this because I think it's relatively simple language to address this item. It's not a comprehensive approach to the lead service line. It's a very narrowly tailored and limited approach that I'm suggesting.
So why don't we just, why don't, why don't we just pass this and, and take it at the workshop and, and take care of it then? I mean, I, I understand this is on the agenda. Scott wants, there's, there's multiple things that this takes care of that Scott wanted to.
I'm happy to pass the first reading. I'm not comfortable waiving the second and third because we discussed this and, and, and that was the same response, is well, we'll deal with it and it hadn't been addressed. So I'm concerned.
Mr. Manager?
If, if I could just real quick, I want to make sure the record's clear. We have made progress on this topic. We've worked with Water Works. I would caution you, because you are correct, there is the potential for twenty thousand homes that may have this. We do not administer twenty thousand homes with ease. There would be an awful lot of notices. There would have to be an awful lot of checking.
But Scott, I'm not talking about the twenty thousand homes, right? That's where we always go to, like, this is just the identified properties. If they are applying for a rental certificate, it would apply to them. We still have to figure out what to do about the full twenty thousand homes, but this is a subpart when they are coming in contact with our system. And if we know that, if we know that there is a potential hazard, we have a duty to provide safe rental housing and we know that there is a potential hazard with some of these properties. That is what it is designed to address. And to try and figure out the full twenty thousand before we can take a small step, that's, that's what I'm getting frustrated with, is that we've avoided having the conversation about the small piece that we can address because we don't have the answer for the big piece.
So it, again, even the subset that involves the rental units is still a large number. We also wanted to make sure in discussions with Water Works, which I strongly recommend we have Water Works at the conversation, is what the solutions will be for those households. Because we do not handle private water lines.
Correct.
And so we want to be able to make sure that when there is conversation about notices for which we do not know of any. So I'd also don't want to stir this up like we think we've got this huge problem. What we're trying to do is verify that we don't have a problem. But if something were to come up and in a test, we want to make sure there is an avenue for resolving that. We don't have that for you right at the moment. So I'd, I'd appreciate a little bit of time to handle that. We can bring it back immediately to give you everything we've got at the January discussion.
You also have a, a significant number of items, uh, updating the remainder of the code that you've been working on for a while. And Sue Ann could bring us up on that, I suppose, also.
I want to be respectful of that. I do not want us to, 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 to get perfection and hold up this action.
Scott, I think what, what I hear you saying is to not, like, not let perfect be the enemy of good would be taking a step then. And so it, it would be beneficial for us to know even the issues that do exist to be able to start building solutions. And so I think it's important for us to know what is out there and to know if there are dangerous situations.
Totally agree with you, but don't hold up a good policy that we have in front of us. Get it implemented.
And I, I don't think we would be. It would be passing the first reading and adding something on for the January meeting since you said that that was possible.
We can have the conversation, but I don't know that it's going to be ready for primetime at the first January meeting.
Maybe the second, then.
Possibly. So again.
Could we have Sue Ann come up and give us sort of a rundown of what we've been working on for an extended period of time? I agree with everybody about lead lines, uh, and, um, if, if we have a number that are identified, they need to be looked into as to whether there are issues around that. Uh, but I, I want to protect everybody, not just the rentals. Um, I think there's a lot of homeowners that have no idea what's going on and that their house may be one of those units. So adding that on to this, um, knowing that, that staff has been working on updating this housing code for a while, we ought to at least discuss what we're doing. I want to protect the interest and the health and wellbeing of all of our citizens, including the rental people. But go ahead, Sue Ann.
Mayor and council, Sue Ann Donovan, um, Neighborhood Services Deputy Director. I, I, I respect the conversation about lead lines. I think that's a conversation we have to have. I also think that we need to pass this ordinance in its current form in order to get some of these other things that we've been working on moving forward. This contains, in, in the International Property Maintenance Code 2021, we haven't updated since 2015. We need to get back into sync with the International Property Maintenance Code. We're also amending what is, what is deemed a public nuisance. The, the ordinance as it's currently written is very confusing for staff, inspectors, uh, permit and the person getting the notice. It, it's just not well crafted. It needs to be changed so people understand what they have to do to, to obey the nuisance. We also put some things in there about Intergov and how we're going to work with Intergov that have changed now that we have the system implemented and we're moving forward. I think it's important for staff to have this piece so that we can do business on a daily basis, move forward and then have the holistic conversation about the, the lead, um, and lead lines. Cause it's, I think it's going to be bigger than just testing because once you test, you need to have a solution. We need to be able to offer people what the solution is. Are, are we going to ask people to vacate rental units while, while the, the water service is, is completely, um, redone? I mean, we've, we've really got to think holistically about how, what the problem is and how we're going to solve it. And I, and I don't believe that we're there yet.
I would say if we don't implement testing right away as, as we are implementing all of these other changes right away, which we deem very, very important, if we don't implement that right away, then we're still in a situation where people living in rental properties don't know if their water is poisonous to them or not. And an immediate solution to their, knowing their water is poisonous is that they can stop drinking it. And we can, and it becomes the responsibility of the landlord to provide safe housing. So it becomes their responsibility to change that when immediately that is a problem.
And, and I, I, I understand that and I respect it. I don't know that we have that scope of the problem. Water Works has identified where there may be, maybe, but they don't know that for a fact.
And we don't know because we're not testing.
I, I understand, but if we can get this legislation passed, we can get some breathing room to start working on that problem comprehensively and get the answers before January ninth. I don't think staff can get those answers to you by January ninth. I don't think we can have a work session for you and have a, a game plan by January ninth. I think we need a, a little breathing space to work on this and get the right answer and work with Water Works and, and figure out the scope. I understand what you're saying. We need space to work this out, though.
Do we need space to implement testing and have that be a part of the code or do we need space to implement the entire comprehensive?
We don't test it.
The testing is, is what happens when it, I mean, did you not, I mean, she said.
Yes.
What happens? So when it tests positive.
I don't.
We're shutting off their water service and we've got to find somewhere for them to live.
I don't need you to talk down to me, Joe.
I don't think anyone's talking down to you.
I, I mean, let, let's be realistic, right? Like, so if there is, if there is a problem, like lead in drinking water is a very serious problem, but when it is identified, typically what folks do is they will get alternative drinking water sources for a time. So it would be bottled water. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to order someone to vacate the premise. Uh, but the landlord does have a duty to provide a safe inhabitable environment. And if you know that there is lead in the drinking water, and I would suspect in most cases, there will not be, right? In most cases, there will not be. But the first part of this process is helping make landlords aware that this exists and helping make the broader public aware that, that this exists. And yes, I want to solve this for everyone, but, uh, when a property owner, like, like the home that I am in, that is a candidate for, for lead, uh, when a property owner chooses to assume the risk, that is different than the landlord providing, uh, a property that, that may have that risk and not know. And, and that is where I think, uh, there is some responsibility and I would like to see us, uh, move forward and move forward quickly. Uh, and one of the reasons why I'm raising this here, this has been something that I have been raising with, uh, the assistant city managers in my meetings for multiple months. I raised it when we had this conversation, uh, at a work session. And I'm frustrated because I think there is a small piece of this that we can tackle and address. And every time I raise it, it's, well, let, give us time to come back and we'll do that next time. Uh, and, and it's not getting done next time. And so if there is a specific commitment in terms of the timeframe, otherwise I'm, I'm more than happy to do the first reading of this ordinance tonight. It's the waiving of the second and third reading because that gives us an opportunity to revisit this conversation and check in on the progress on a piece that I think can be done in relatively short order.
Now, I think we can, um, still discuss the, the water issues on a later date at a January or February or March meeting. I would prefer to put a bow on this and pass seventy-one and, um, according to rule forty-two A to, um, to waive the second and third reading.
We would need a.
She's, she's, she's asking us to pass it so staff can actually continue to get some work done and work on this.
Yes.
And then work on the lead problem. If this is, if this is in, if we're going to have a workshop about the lead issue, then staff for the next three weeks is, I mean.
We're having a disagreement about the scope of the request. The scope of the request is not to work on the entire lead.
Scott, Scott, can we ask you to get ahold of the Water Works and then also communicate with legal because there's probably going to be some legal issues surrounding this as well? And, uh, let's do it, hopefully first work session in January. And let's do it, hopefully, first work session in January to at least bring this to the table and see how big of an issue the Water Works and legal thinks this is to move this forward, because I appreciate what Suan has, has said, that we've been working on this other piece for a while and there's things that need to be resolved in this updating on this amendment to Chapter 60 that we've been working on for a while. And with the new software and compliance and making everything merge, this needs to happen. We know the other piece needs to happen as well, and, you know, some of us have been working on this for a long period of time, even, even before some others have even been on council. I've been concerned about this when we had Bill Stowe as our Water Director.
All right.
Trying to sort through it, and he was.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'd like to.
I'm, I'm sorry, I already started. To move 71 and, to Rule 42A to, to waive the second and third reading.
I'll second that motion.
What I was going to say is I think that we should be realistic, because we need six votes to pass the second and third reading. And if we've got two council members who are disagreeing about passing the second and third reading, then that's not going to happen, so we should be realistic about the next steps that we're taking, which can be to include this in the second or third reading.
Well, I, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that we need to have the discussion. We have a staff, a, a senior staff member asking us to pass this so her staff can continue to work on this. I'm not disagreeing with Josh, I'm not disagreeing with you, but we need to have Water Works at the table, we need to have a roundtable with them of how are we going to solve this when we're going to require the landlords to do this testing? I'm not disagreeing with that. I would agree with you. I would like to see this passed. So next year, when we sit down, Scott, you're going to organize a meeting with them, and we're going to have that discussion, and we are going to get some very clear guidelines for a landlord to be able to fix this, and what happens if it tests positive? Who's going to provide the water? How, how much time are they going to need to get it fixed? Where are they going to live if they're not going to be able to live there? Who's going to have all the cost? We need all those questions, and I want those answers before we put that in an ordinance. This ordinance needs to be passed. You have a senior staff member asking you to pass this so we can move on with these things that they've been working on, so our staff can continue to work on these things. I'm giving you my word that I will help that, the rest of it get done at the beginning of the year, but we need to get this done.
So again, unless Josh changes his mind, we're not going to get the second and third reading passed, so are we going to waste that time, or are we going to include this in the ordinance for the second or third reading?
Yes, Connie?
Thank you. I would, okay, I would say let's get this passed tonight, I would say on January 9th, we have some type of ordinance written that, about the testing, we need to find out all the, what all the situations are that we can ask people to test, it's just a testing. But with that goes back to the item on 38, what we need to figure out, what means, just to say we're going to give them bottled water, they have to go out and buy bottled water, how long does that go on until they afford it? So I think we have to, let's get it worked out, that if we're going to have them test, what ramification will that be? And will it be part of our discussion of what we're asking for incentives and things like that the other way? So I think that, let's get this passed so the staff can get moving on what they've had issues with, and then January 9th, let's come back and have working on the possibility of just at least having them test if they're going through a rental inspection to the point that Josh brought up.
So, will this, Scott, will you bring something back to us January 9th?
Yeah, we will bring as much as we have available on January 9th.
We're going to need to have some conversations with Water Works, and whether it be small groups, or whether, how we're going to do it, or an open meeting, or a workshop of some sort. So Water Works needs to be at the table for this discussion.
So we're holding back testing and the awareness of renters to be able to know if there's lead in their drinking water, because we don't have a solution for it yet, but the solution that someone, if someone knows there's lead in their drinking water is they can stop drinking it.
Hey, it's not going to, it's not going to get done tonight anyway, if you want to add that in there. So you're not holding up.
No, but it could, it could be, it could be an amendment on January 9th.
No. Scott, bring back what you can. Also, every child is tested, you know, the, it's required to be in schools. So we know if somebody has a, has an issue with lead, lead-based paint, or, I mean, lead, lead in the water lines, we know it because they get tested. So it's not like it's just unknown, and we need to figure out how we're going to handle it. But there's so much more to this, and we don't handle water. That's Des Moines Water Works. And Des Moines Water Works will tell you, they're already out there testing the lines. I have, I know people who have something at their house and Water Works comes out every year and, and takes a sample from it. So for us to sit here and say we want to do this, we need to involve Des Moines Water Works. They need to be here.
You know what, I, I agree with you, we're going to get them there. But I also, I mean, I also agree, we do, if we're giving a rental certificate, then we do need to, we do need to make sure that they don't have lead pipes. That's fine, but this is.
Well, they're going to have lead pipes.
This isn't going to get passed if we don't waive the second and third reading right now. Nothing's going to get done until the end of January anyway, so why don't we pass this so staff can continue to work?
Yeah, I agree.
And then we, then we take on the next problem in January and we get it solved. It's not that big of a deal, it's nothing to sit up here and argue. Nothing's going to get solved tonight about lead pipes anyway. He's got to go back and write it on the amendment. Then we have to pass two more readings. That's how the process works.
So we're agreeing on putting an amendment on?
I, I, I'm okay if I have people's commitment that we'll tackle this in January, right?
You've got it from everybody sitting here.
We'll talk about it.
Everybody said we would.
I'll talk about it, but I think landlords need to be involved, you know, we keep pushing stuff onto the personal property rights, which I object to.
I'm going to vote yes, based on people's commitment that they'll work with, work on this issue at, at the beginning of the new year.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second.
I'm sure staff's going to thank you.
Connie?
Linda.
Connie, is that a yes?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes. Seven, yes.
All right. Our last item, and Connie, you may want to quickly, if you want to, amend Chapter 2-62 of the municipal code relating to the salary of the mayor and the council members. Did you want to touch on that?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, Carl will certainly do that. He can.
Okay, Carl, you're up.
Thank you. So we're bringing this salary proposal for the mayor and the council forward this evening, and with a pledge that we should do this every two years than every four years. So it's great to see Parks and Rec review their fees annually, so we can do a better job on that, but with that, if there's any discussion.
I was going to add, Carl, this does not take that tax until January 2024.
I know, but.
I'll stop that.
A motion in a second?
Just real quick, I'd just like to thank the three of you that's on the Personnel Committee. I know this, this isn't an, an easy thing to tackle each, each time, that's probably why it's gone every four years. Before that, I think it was eight years, but I appreciate you guys taking this on and, and I will be supportive of this. Anyone that's did this job knows how much time consuming it is, and to have a full-time job and to do this, which is a full-time job, and to be successful at it. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys just taking the time to do it.
Seven, yes.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the part of our.
Mayor?
Yep.
Can I, pursuant to Rule 42A, can I, can I waive the second and third reading on that?
All right, we'll have to have another vote, but yes.
Okay. I'd like to have another vote pursuant to Rule 42A.
Do you need a second on that?
I do.
Second?
Actually, I think the record would be cleaner if council would move to reconsider item 73.
72.
I'm sorry, 72.
I'll move to reconsider item 72, I'll make a motion for that.
That's what we have legal here, they, they, they take care of all these things. We have a motion first to reconsider, can we do a vote, voice vote on that?
No, no, and we need a second.
Second.
Okay, a second. All in favor to reconsider?
Voting to reconsider.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Okay, now we're going to open, and it's my understanding.
I'll move 72, I'll move 72 pursuant to Rule 42A, we'll waive the second and third reading of that.
I'll let you second that if you want.
Second.
Okay, ask everybody to vote?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to the communication reports, the requests from our citizens to speak. Our first speaker this evening is Adam Callanan. Adam, you're up, and we'll ask each speaker, you'll get two minutes to speak, so keep your own time, because at the end you'll be muted and we'll move on to the next speaker. Adam, you're up.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, I use him pronouns, I live in Ward 3. The city of Des Moines and Polk County have been using public offices for leverage in private meetings to discriminate against black artists. While I'm talking about allegations against Councilmember Westergaard here, because I'm at a city council meeting, I want to acknowledge that Polk County Supervisor Tom Hawkinsmith and the Private Parks Area Foundation are also implicated in these allegations. While Westergaard was alone representing the city in these meetings, all of council's responsible because she was representing the city, her position to represent the city with the arts foundations is at the discretion of council, and because any discrimination that happens in Des Moines, whether it happens in lead pipes or public parks or anything, is an issue for the city that the city is ultimately responsible for. It is alleged that back in March, at a private meeting with Westergaard, Hawkinsmith, and the Parks Area Foundation, Westergaard and others refused to allow hip-hop artists to perform at Riverview Park, stating that this music was vulgar and critical of police, so it must not be allowed. And a Parks Area Foundation member was pressured to resign after calling out this racism for what it was. Westergaard denies some elements of this, but the evidence is seen in what happened. The member who called out the alleged racism was pressured to resign, and there was a lack of hip-hop artists at this year's rendezvous at Riverview, and no Riverview Music Festival this year. It's clear the city and county have violated free expression rights by labeling genres as vulgar. Westergaard and others have sought to resolve this matter, this, of public racism privately, any resolution needs to be public, not private. The city needs to remove Westergaard from any positions involved with the arts, such as the Des Moines Public Area Public Art Foundation, and a role with the Riverview Park concerts. The city needs to be more transparent about roles like this, that have private meetings that aren't really publicly announced, because these, whether or not they're used for bad things, they enable corruption and racism out of public eye. Linda Westergaard should also resign.
Too bad they don't have their facts.
Okay, next speaker is Bridget Botkin. Bridget? Bridget Botkin. RJ Miller. RJ?
RJ Miller, Ward 1. This city needs someone who will defend them against gentrification, redlining, and imminent domain, and the fentanyl epidemic. This city demands an anti-sellout and an anti-establishment councilman, which is why I will be running for city council at large against Carl Voss, because I intend on fighting for safer schools and safer neighborhoods, and I intend on putting public safety back in the hands of public individuals by creating civilian oversight and better public safety policies. And Linda, was that funny to you? I, I don't know how racial discrimination is funny. So my, my response to you is, I'm not going to lip box with you anything, I'm not going to encourage anybody else to lip box with you anything, I'm going to organize and replace you, because we ain't going to chase you. But closing this, I do want to acknowledge the mayor for wanting to do the U form, for meeting up with me and wanting to have another meeting. So I'd like to thank you for that, for pushing, to encourage the youth to be positive. Thank you. Linda, stop being racist.
All right. Sam Davis. Sam? Sam Davis?
I'll receive. 73A and C.
Second.
Motion to receive and follow the comments of our speakers, A and C. Connie?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
All right.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor?
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Let's go.
Thank you all, happy holidays to everybody, we'll see you in 2023.